Good morning. I am Vice President Sharon Green Middleton, representing the 6th District. And this morning, I'll be the chairperson for the Budget and Appropriations Committee. Also joining, first of all, please turn off your cellphones or put them in mute. And also joining me today is President of the Baltimore City Council, Z. Cohen.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And this morning, we have members of the committee, Parrish Gray of the 8th District. And I'm sure other ones will be joining us soon. Other members of the council that are also in attendance, we have Mark Parker of the 1st District.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Odette Ramos of the 14th District.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And Zach Blatchard of the 11th District.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And we also have several representatives from the Mayor's Office and Council President's Office behind us. Committee to the staff from 9:00 to noon. Next to me is Marguerite Curran. City Council Bill 250060, Ordinance of Estimates for the Fiscal Year Ending June 30, 2026. This is day two of the agency budget hearings for the purpose of providing the appropriations estimated to be needed by each agency of the city of Baltimore for operating programs and capital projects during the fiscal 2026 year, effective beginning July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2026. Also, we do have a change in committee rules for council members to ask questions during this budget hearing. And I want to also inform the listening audience that no public testimony is allowed during budget hearings. And at this time, we're going to start with the presentations. And from 9:00 to 9:30 a.m., we have the Baltimore Development Corporation, Colin Tarbert, which is President/CEO of the organization. And from 9:30 to 10:00, we have the Baltimore Office of Promotion and Arts, and the Mayor's Office of Arts and Culture. And the agency representative for BOPA is Robin Murphy. Is Robin here yet? And then for the Office of Arts and Culture, we have Tanya Hall. So we'll start with those two. And when we finish with those, then we're going to just take a recess and we'll have another member be the chair until our official chair returns. Okay, Colin, you're on. We'll start with you.
Sure. Good morning, Madam Chair, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Colin Tarbert, and I'm President and CEO of the Baltimore Development Corporation. I'm also joined by members of the BDC team here. To my left is our Executive Vice President, Kim Clark. I'm also joined by Jeff Pillis, our CFO, Chevelle Dixon, our Controller, and Ira Callar, our Managing Director for Neighborhood Development. We can go ahead and pull up the slides. That would be great. Terrific. We can go to the next slide. So I think most of you are familiar with the Baltimore Development Corporation. We have some new members here, but we essentially have three services that are part of the budget, 809, 810, and 813. The first service, which I'll go through in more detail, is our, what we refer to as BRE. It's our Business Retention, Expansion, and Attraction. So this is working with existing companies as well as looking to recruit new companies to the city. Service 810 is real estate development. As you know, we work a lot with developers. We dispose of city properties. And then we also help small businesses and property owners kind of navigate through the city processes in terms of investment. And then last is Service 813. This is our entrepreneurial development. This is comprised of two programs, our Made in Baltimore program, which we'll talk about, as well as our Emerging Technology Center, which is focused on higher-growth startup businesses. Go to the next slide, please. So as I mentioned, BDC, we're the Economic Development Agency for the city. Our mission is to grow the city's economy in an inclusive manner by retaining, expanding, and attracting businesses and promoting investment, thereby increasing job opportunities for city residents. Our fiscal goals for 2026 are to retain existing businesses, increase the city's tax base, attract investment to emerging entrepreneurial companies. Next slide. So we'll dive a little bit more into the services, 809, Retention, Expansion, and Attraction of Businesses. As I mentioned, this service really focuses on both retaining and increasing jobs in key growth sectors. You're hopefully familiar with Baltimore Together, which is the city's comprehensive economic development strategy. That lays out six key growth sectors in the city. So we like to align our activities focusing on those six industries, sectors, but not exclusively. We have two performance measures here for you. One is companies that BDC assisted staying in the city. Just kind of a rule of thumb in economic development is about 90% of the job growth in an economy, local economy, is going to come from existing businesses and expansion of those businesses. So retention is a key strategy in terms of job growth and stability. So in FY '24, our target was 150 businesses. Our actual was 139. And for FY '26, we are targeting 140, so about the same. I'll mention that our CLS, the funding budget recommendation, is to keep us at current level of service. So that's one reason why we're keeping in with the traditional targets. And then the second measure of performance is number of jobs created or retained. I mentioned the retention aspect, but also a lot of the jobs that are being created through new developments in Baltimore Peninsula. We've attracted a number of companies, as well as Harbor Point, which are two of the main drivers. And FY '24 actual was 1,700, slightly under the 2,000 target. And we are targeting 1,900 jobs retained for FY '26. Go to the next service. So Service 810 is real estate development. BDC serves as kind of the primary organization helping real estate developers and commercial real estate. We also lead the disposition of city properties for commercial redevelopment and really serve as that point of contact and resource for anyone interested in, as we have here, major redevelopment projects. But also, we help a lot of small businesses when they are going through the permit process to do tenant fit-outs and other smaller projects as well. So the recommended budget, again, is at the current level of service. And we have two measures here, the number of commercial corridor facades that are completed. That's one of our premier programs, is our Facade Improvement Program. We provide to mostly small businesses. In FY '24, we had 29 of those completed with a target of 50. And we have a FY '26 target of 47. And the second measure we have here is the value of private investment per dollar of public investment. So we certainly want to steward public funds in a way that leverages private investment. Traditionally, this has hovered around kind of a 1 to 10 ratio. And so in FY '24, we had a target of $8 per $1 of public investment. We achieved $11 of private investment per $1 of public investment. And in FY '26, we're targeting $10, so a 1 to 10 ratio. And then our last service. No, we got one more. There we go. 813 is, it says Technology Development, Emerging Technology Center. This is actually our entrepreneurial development service. So there's two key programs under this service. The first is the Made in Baltimore program, which I think most of you are familiar with. This helps a couple hundred makers in the city create products. We certify them. We provide technical assistance. And hopefully, you've all been shopping at the Made in Baltimore store at Harbor Place. We also provide a physical location for small businesses to sell their goods. And then the second one is the Emerging Technology Centers Program. This is about 25 years of continuous service. Traditionally, we have had it as a physical incubator space that's moved around the city. And over the past year, we've actually reconfigured that program to be more focused and intentional and deep in terms of programmatic services. So we recently opened up our ETC hub at 4 MLK in West Baltimore in partnership with the University of Maryland BioPark in Wexford. Dr. Artie Santonom runs that program. And we have, I think, attracted two companies to the program to start. I think both were outside of the city. We're focused on med tech, primarily focused on women and BIPOC founders in that space. The essential reason for kind of pivoting and going into a new direction was we did a very in-depth strategic planning process two years ago. Post-COVID, the need for coworking space and office space definitely kind of waned. And so we wanted to better direct our resources to companies that have the ability to scale up and create lots of jobs. And again, targeting one of our key growth sectors, one of the six is life sciences. There are two performance measures for this, new Made in Baltimore business certifications. As I mentioned, we certify each business. We have a, we did 46 in FY '24. And in '25, we targeted 25. And in FY '26, we'll be targeting about 40. And then in terms of the Made in Baltimore business education programs, again, we did about 61 participants in those programs, and we're targeting 50. We didn't include the ETC measures because it's so new. We're still trying to make sure that we have, we have measures for that, but we also want to see how the program continues to grow. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions for the council.
Thank you, Colin. I first want to recognize the council members that have joined us this morning. And that's Felicia Porter of the 10th District, Mark Conway of the 4th District, Jermaine Jones of the 12th District. And I think that covered everyone. For council members, two questions per round. And we're going to start with our council president, add some words.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Colin, I just want to thank you for your service to the city. I know that you are leaving this role relatively soon. And I did just want to say on behalf of the council that I truly, and we truly appreciate your work. I'll say just two things that have been meaningful to me. One is your contribution to CFG Arena. I think that when we started to have conversations about CFG, there were a lot of folks who did not think that was going to work. And it has been an enormous success for the city. We are booking incredible venues. It has generated an extraordinary amount of energy and excitement. And I think a lot of the work that went into that behind the scenes was to your credit and to your team's credit, and so grateful for that. I also just want to lift up the Boost Program. The Mayor's Chief of Staff and I had an opportunity recently in partnership with Downtown Partnership and Senator Hayes and a number of folks to just celebrate some of the entrepreneurs that we've been able to bring into downtown. And I think in this moment where there is so much pressure on our meds and eds and academia and some of our more traditional industries, it's just really good to see black, brown, women-owned, everyone-owned businesses that are coming to downtown and that are thriving. And that the hustle and chutzpah and entrepreneurial spirit that is so endemic to Baltimore, just the grittiness and the toughness, having that program and lifting those folks up, both the support financially, but also just in terms of recognizing their contribution to the city, I think has made a huge, huge difference. And again, grateful that the mayor has championed it, grateful that you've been there and really took it seriously. And so that's all I got. I just want to say thank you and that your team and your service does not go unappreciated. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, President Cohen. You couldn't have said it so eloquently for all of us. So we do appreciate everything that you do. And I'll start off with one, a first question. As the council president mentioned, there's loads of projects now happening in the city. And the partnerships that you have and continue to work with are so important. I guess I would like to ask, how do you address infrastructure? That's just, you know, that is happening all over the city. Is there a process that you use to address infrastructure as you're working with the partners and businesses throughout the city?
So we, I mean, so BDC, we don't have a specific allocation for infrastructure generally. And of course, it goes through the capital improvement planning process. We've advocated for specific infrastructure projects that are tied to economic development. And then we've also advocated for funding for new developments that need new infrastructure. So I'll give you the examples of those. So one is the Tax Increment Financing Program, you know, which some people find controversial, but really, there's no other huge bucket of money. I mean, you know, the CIP amount of money that I think the city gets, maybe, what, 60 million now a year or something of that nature. Harbor Point Infrastructure was 100 million. So you would eat up, you know, a year and a half worth of infrastructure money just for one project. And so we've been able to use future increment to fund some of that where it's needed. And then, of course, we get the vertical development. Same with Port Covington, now Baltimore Peninsula. So we've advocated for that funding in terms of infrastructure. And then we're currently, hopefully, knock on wood, commencing with Warner Street Entertainment Corridor, which is utilizing both city funds as well as the local impact aid for the casino, which has restricted that area, which hopefully will bring in hotels, support Top Golf, the casino, and other development. And there's been other ones that have been specific. Generally, though, what we hear from small businesses, especially kind of in the neighborhoods, is like the need for upgrading the sewer and water. So our team actually worked with DPW in Hollands Market area, where we had a bakery, I believe it was a bakery, that couldn't open because the cost to improve the water pressure was exorbitant. And the reason why, because the, you know, the city said, well, your water pressure, you need to add like a pump basically to get the water going. And we said, well, that, and it was like thousands of dollars for a small business. They said, well, maybe we could do like a grand or something. I don't know. We don't really have that many tools for those types of, you know, unique cases. Anyway, we ended up mapping because we started getting calls from other businesses. And what we figured out was the main was, the main was leaking. And so we contacted DPW, so we mapped it. Can you guys really take a harder look at it? And of course, you know, it was that. And so they were, I think they're in the process of upgrading that so that small businesses don't all have to buy a pump, which is for thousands of dollars. So that's kind of one example of just like triaging. And then our most latest program that we launched just a few weeks ago, and Mr. Callar can talk to it if you have more interest in it, is our CDA program, our Commercial District Assessment. And so we're working with community partners to do on-the-ground assessments of those commercial districts, whether it's a Main Street, unofficial Main Street, to see what the needs are for sidewalks, trees, other public infrastructure. It's similar to a program that we had in the past called Links, which again, was helping kind of fund these commercial districts and upgrade the infrastructure, so.
Right. Yes, I'd like to hear, we'd like to hear a little bit more about that.
Certainly. Thank you very much, Councilwoman.
And state your name.
Yes, of course. Ira Callar, Managing Director, Baltimore Development Corporation. Yeah, just to touch on it in a little more detail, we have officially launched our Commercial Development, or sorry, Commercial District Assessment Initiative, our CDA initiative. We'll be partnering in this first round with 10 partners in commercial corridors throughout the city. And a critical part of that is to combine kind of third-party data with actual on-the-ground surveying, both of real property conditions as well as, as Colin alluded to, public right-of-way conditions, right? And be able to put together both some metrics and some data that kind of speaks to the health of commercial districts as well as where those needed, whether they're public infrastructure, whether they're private property investments, whether they are operating and organizational investments, where those investments are really going to have the biggest bang for the buck in particular, commercial districts. So we're very excited to kick that off. We're hoping by the end of the summer that we will have the first of our set of, again, 10 commercial profiles to publish and to begin work on whatever those outcomes might be.
Okay. So I see that you do have communication on a regular basis with DPW. Do you have the same with the Department of Transportation as well? What are some, are there any transportation things that are, that are in need of discussion or that you're working on as well?
The main one has been the Warner Street project. And so Director Macbeth, I mean, she met with us, like, I think, for her first week on the job. And we've known her from working in the past together. So I think that that relationship's going to be well-improved under her leadership.
All right. Thank you. I'll move it on to, and we'll start with Councilmember Gray.
Thank you, Chair. Sorry about that. When redevelopment of the Harbor Place begins, and this is centered around Made in Baltimore, is there a plan to relocate or continue to support the Made in Baltimore businesses? And if so, can you walk us through exactly what that looks like?
Yeah, well, the Harbor Place project is probably still a few, you know, at least a year plus off in terms of permitting and entitlement before any dirt starts to move. So I believe we're going to stay there in terms of the near-term future. It's a large space. We may sort of tweak the size of the space, but we're going to be there. We haven't had any in-depth conversations about when the time comes to relocate where that store will go. But we can certainly keep the council updated. But we think it's a great program. It's very time and staff-intensive for the team here. We do a lot of the work in-house, so there might be ways to streamline that. But the store and the physical presence has been not just a great place for the small businesses, but it's also created a lot of community when we were in Station North and now at the harbor. So I think the physical presence of it will continue. But we haven't had any conversations about, you know, if it'll stay in the harbor area or, you know, move somewhere else in the city.
Yep. It is definitely my hope that it stays there. I think it does a great service, not only to the vendors, but also to folks that are coming to Baltimore. They get to see a little bit of everything. But also, I know some of those stores may have other locations. And you can kind of, next time they come to town and they're there for a longer time, they can go and visit the actual store. And I think it just does a great, it's a great ecosystem. So I definitely appreciate that. My next question is, BDC is in partnership with the Downtown Partnership. And I guess you guys are both a partner of the Boost Program, correct?
The Boost Program is led by Downtown Partnership, but we've assisted in providing technical assistance. And a number of the Boost Program participants received grants from our Base Network Program through ARPA. So there's a lot of collaboration in terms of the companies and the locations and working with Shalonda.
Yep. So a handful of businesses, we just heard a handful of businesses who were in the Boost Program had hardships, by the way, of delays from partner organizations and ultimately had to cut ties with the program because their business was in jeopardy. Can you tell us about the biggest challenges that you've had in supporting these businesses? As well as if you all have addressed the challenges that have been brought up or if you're aware of them?
Not specifically. Again, like the Boost Program is being operated by Downtown Partnership. So I don't know specifically which businesses had challenges. Although I'd just say, I mean, being a small business and doing pop-ups, I mean, it's a little bit of the nature of, you know, testing and trying things out. But we've provided grants to small businesses. I'd say like the challenges there have just been, we're dealing with micro businesses. And so a lot of the challenges that we've had was kind of getting through some of the requirements that the city was requiring BDC to administer in terms of paperwork and documentation. And, you know, these folks, some of the cases, you know, it might be a second job. And so those have been more of the primary issues that we've had is trying to marry, you know, the requirements that we have to do in terms of our due diligence under public dollars and good stewardship with small businesses that, you know, lack the capacity.
And as far as the paperwork and what can feel like sometimes like a delay in the process, have you guys, do you guys have any solutions for that? And have you shared that with, like, the city to say, hey, have we thought about doing things in a different way to make sure that we can quickly get these funds to these micro businesses? Or I guess I'm just asking, is there any way that you think that we can improve the process?
For that particular program, it was ARPA funds. So a lot of it was being driven almost at the federal level and then cascading down. So that program sunset, I think our programs are like less intensive, although there's still, you know, going to be paperwork to be done. But we try to streamline it as much as possible. But I think it was more about the ARPA requirements that made it more of a challenge. So hopefully, that won't happen in the future.
Definitely makes sense. Thank you. And thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilman. Next, we have Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thanks to you also for all your great work and your team. Can you talk a little bit more about the Commercial District Assessment? What are the 10 areas? I know you're going to say one in my district, or you better. And what, after this assessment happens and you send out this report, kind of what's the next step? Is it advocacy to try to get some of these needs addressed, working with the council? What's the next step on that?
Before Mr. Callar responds, I'll just say we were trying to work in your district, but a nudge might be helpful.
That is where, I'm happy to take that offline, and I know what you're talking about.
Thank you, Councilmember. I'm looking forward to that discussion. Yeah, I'll say, we've been quite clear with the partners for this first round. You know, the first part of the CDA initiative does not come with any funding from us, right? What it comes with is kind of the start of a partnership and the start of data sharing, right? I think part of what we've realized is that as BDC, we have both access to a lot of data that our partners maybe don't have access to. And we also have access to expertise and ways to kind of talk about and narrativize, to maybe make up a word, that data in impactful ways for our district partners. So the first part of this process, again, is kind of both a consolidation of that data as well as that on-the-ground surveying work with partners. So as of, I believe, last week, our district partners that have signed their district agreements, that have been trained, have begun that surveying work in partnership with BDC. So again, we go out, these are, there's two surveys that are a portion of this first round. One, again, is a public right-of-way windshield survey that's on a block, face by block, face level. And the other is a real property survey, looking at the conditions of every single commercial property in a district. What are the conditions? What are the uses? What are the potential future uses for said property? The goal is to keep it relatively simple, 15 to 20 minutes a block, a survey, make it something that a district partner can do relatively quickly, that can also start giving us the data that we can then go back and do two things, I think, in this first round. One is kind of put together some of that narrative and visualization, start telling that story of the district for all of the partners to go out and advocate for projects, advocate for funding. And the other part is gathering the data so that we can actually do some of the more in-depth citywide analysis, talk about what are the expected and unexpected determinants of commercial district.
So what are the 10 areas?
Sure. So in our first round, I'll start from the south. We're working in Brooklyn. We're working in the Hollands Market, West Baltimore Street area. We are working in Market Center. We're working in Charles Street. We're working in York Road. We are working, actually... We are working actually on two separate portions of Harford Road. We are working in West North Avenue, and we look forward to hopefully working in Waverly as well.
Great. So is it for the entire district? So the Waverly Main Street, it goes from Greymount Avenue, we're going down to 25th to 35th. So is that entire area which you're surveying?
Sure. So the first phase of this process has been defining those district boundaries with the partner, or I should be more specific, not necessarily defining the partner's district boundaries, but kind of defining what we want to study as the district in a way that is both representative of that district, but also feasible in terms of actually surveying within a two-month period, right? So we've worked with each district, we finalized those boundaries, and then those boundaries let us both pull walk shed, bespoke walk shed data for those boundaries and identify, again, the number of blocks and potential commercial businesses that we.
Okay. Well, we'll certainly, I will make sure it all happens in Waverly. Don't you worry about that. My second question is about the similar, a couple of years ago, I was able to, and thanks to the mayor's office, had an allocation of 125,000 go to BDC. It wasn't exactly what I wanted, which was for business development in terms of, you know, being able to help not just the facade, but also, and so we were able to, you were able to deploy some of that. I guess my disappointment is just that, you know, and I'm fine with the projects that were chosen, but it wasn't in consultation with me, and it wasn't in consultation with the Waverly Main Street. And so I hope that the remaining funds would be deployed based on, you know, some of the priorities that we have in our, in our Main Street. And so I don't know if your team wants to comment on that, but I think that, you know, when there's an allocation from a council member through the mayor's office, I have to be consulted, and I was not. So I think that that's something that needs to be improved. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilmember Blatchard?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Yeah, and Colin and I, you know, and sad to see both you go and Dan go, but obviously I'm pumped that Dan is basically still staying in mostly my district with waterfront partnerships. So you guys have been great partners in my couple of months in office. So the two questions. First one, so this is a special issue of the Baltimore Business Journal from February 2003, A New Frontier: Rebuilding Downtown's West Side. And, you know, every article in here is about reasons to be optimistic about downtown's west side. That was 22 years ago. It hasn't aged well. Should we be confident that, 22 years from now is 2047, should we be confident that it will read better in 2047 than it reads in 2025?
So I'll just say that, so the downtown's west side progress, I would agree with you, is lacking. And we can talk a little bit about why and what I see as the barriers. I would say, though, there's been a tremendous amount of investment. So, I mean, we can certainly provide you with the number of properties, especially more probably in the last 10 years, I would say, of in public disposition and investment. Those have been more on the small scale, so we've been very successful in working with small, smaller developers doing kind of individual projects. They tend to be mixed-use housing, but we've disposed of, I don't know the exact number, but it's more than a dozen-plus investment. And so we can pull those numbers for you. I don't want it to look like there hasn't been progress for 22 years. There's been a lot, but it's been at a scale that I think is not catalytic. And so what we're left with is what I will refer to as the hole in the doughnut, which is, you know, and again, kind of to success, like CFG Bank Arena, huge success, $250 million of private investment, Lexington Market, $45 million of mostly public investment, actually all public investment. And so the, what we call Howard Lexington, which is kind of half of the former super block, the other half, we've actually gotten a lot of it done. But again, it's sort of more infill, so it's not as maybe transformational. Howard Lexington is the hole in the doughnut. And I think as long as that continues to sit there vacant, you're not going to see the dramatic change that, I think is definitely possible, so I'm still continuing to be optimistic. But that's, you know, that's kind of one of, if I were to continue at BDC, that would be like number one on the list, because otherwise you're not going to see all the adjacent investment if that block sits there the way it is.
Yeah, yeah, I appreciate it. And I'm not trying to, you know, I'm just share the frustration that I know you and a lot of folks have. And there certainly is, I know the residential population of the west side of downtown has exploded. I'm actually really optimistic about Park Avenue, with the exception of the super block block and Cortis' , you know, fenced in grass thing. But yeah, Howard, Utah, Paca, basically from Pratt up to MLK. The, so that's, that's that. And just specifically, like, if you were king for a day, like, what is, what is it that we have to do that, like, if people, you know, all the individual investment is great, but like just what, and CFT is great, Lexington Market's great, hopefully in 10 years, Convention Center will be great. But like, what do we have to do so that in 10 years, people can walk around west side of downtown and just appreciate the diversity, the really diverse set of immigrant-owned businesses, black-owned businesses, the amazing architecture of that area? We talk about like the potential of the city and the potential downtown. Nowhere is that in the city, I think. Is it, is it more the gap between the potential and the current state at a bigger scale than the west side of downtown? You know, so if you were king for a day, like, what do we got to do so that in 10 years, people just walk around that and be like, wow, this is really nice?
Yeah, I don't think.
And I'd just like to interrupt a little bit. Keep, try to keep your answers short, because we have to be mindful with time. And evidently, this is showing too, that maybe some individual meetings with council members need to probably be set up with each district eventually.
Sure. I'll give a short answer to revitalizing the west side in the next 10 years.
10 words or less.
So I mean, what I've shared with you, so there's kind of three components, I would say. One is the infrastructure needs to be upgraded. It's, you know, it's falling apart. And that's kind of, well, it's general, general, but there definitely needs to be an investment in infrastructure. But the infrastructure investment won't move the needle if you also don't deal with the social issues that we have in downtown. So, you know, there's crime, there's homelessness, there's, you know, I was hoping some of the opioid funds would be deployed to help address that issue. And then you also need to address the physical development issue. And so I, you know, we had had chats about the fact that I think the current tools that the city has probably aren't going to be enough to get, in particular, Howard Lexington done. And so I think there needs to be a little outside-of-the-box thinking around more public investment in the projects to be catalytic. So those would be the three things, if I could wave a wand.
Yeah. Thank you for the quick question. Second question, the Commercial District Assessments, I'm super excited about that. I think this is a great idea. Ira, could you talk a little bit more about what's going on there?
Certainly. And I think just to keep my answer brief here, we are, we have just gotten started. So would love to offer you a more in-depth briefing in the future on some of the districts in your district. But yeah, looking, we are, I've gotten started in the past week here. Data will be gathered over the next two months here in terms of surveying. And then again, by the end of the summer, I think we will be publishing profiles that will be publicly available for everyone to see.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ramos answered, asked that question, you must have missed it.
Sorry, Matt Chau. I was kind of like elaborating a little bit on the, and I, I'll just end my thought here with, I do think that with the scale of our unoccupied vacancies in our retail districts in the city, having a really clear grasp of that citywide is important, so we can figure out what to do about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. And just another reminder, it does seem like there need to, maybe the first of the year, first of the fiscal year, we can start setting up meetings just since there is a lot of, a whole lot of things going on. And the next three, there's three more councilpeople questions. Please be mindful of time as we move on, because we're almost 15 minutes behind. Councilwoman Porter, question.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Colin, you've announced your departure from BDC. Do we have a transition plan or sustainability plan after you leave? Who's going to kind of take what you've done and kind of take it to the next level?
I can't comment on that. Comment on that. I'm not part of the transition.
Internally, is there a plan for BDC?
I mean, you'd have to defer to the board and the mayor's office in terms of transitions.
Yeah, so the mayor's office has been engaged with August Chazera, who's the chair of the board at BDC, on selection of a new CEO. That announcement is imminent. It should happen probably in the next two weeks, but they've gone through a full process and have selected a candidate and are in negotiations.
Councilman Parker?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, my colleague, for asking the most important question relative to transitions, especially with both of you heading in different directions. My remaining question is really very straightforward then, in reference to the Made in Baltimore Program serviced under 813. Just notes there under the outputs, actual fiscal year '24 Made in Baltimore business certifications was 46. The target for this year was only 25, and then jumps up to 40 this coming year. Just, can you just walk us through, is there some, was there some capacity limitations? Or what's, what was part of the downturn and what was part of the, what's part of the plan to increase that?
Sure. Thank you so much, Councilmember. Real briefly, I will confess, I was not here when the FY '25 target was originally set, but I will say we've already exceeded that number in FY '25. So I think we were maybe a little conservative, but are doing quite well already. So looking forward to growing that number. And actually, I've expanded that certification process throughout the whole team to assist with it as well.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilmember Jones?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess my question is, like, when I think about an economic development agency, I not only think about helping businesses grow, but also creating jobs, job creation. And as you, you know, attract businesses to Baltimore, I'm curious to hear, what are you hearing as far as like the talent that they need in order to grow? And what are we doing as a city to make sure we have the talent for these businesses to kind of continue to grow when it comes to like job creation? What can we do to make sure we have the type of talent here in Baltimore where businesses want to come here and grow?
Yeah, we, I mean, we generally score pretty high on the talent piece that companies are looking for in terms of maybe the higher education side of things. You know, we have a number of, you know, a pretty high percentage of PhDs and masters given all of the colleges and universities we have. So we, I have not heard from companies that they have trouble hiring or recruiting talent for those positions. So we tend to score pretty well in terms of other metros. That's one of our competitive advantages. And then in terms of maybe more of the entry-level workforce, or we tend to do pretty well in like the logistics. So we had a company called Home Chef, which came into the city. It's a division of Kroger. They hired, I think, over 400 people, mostly city residents, again, sort of lower skill, but, you know, opportunity there. They didn't have any trouble hiring. I think it's dependent on certain sectors. So last night I was at NCIA, which is a vocational training and kind of near Little Italy. The need for CDL and HVAC and the building trades and those types of things, I think, are still pertinent. There's a lot of great programs. But that's usually where we see companies looking to hire and having to pay, you know, more competitive wages. But overall, I think the city does pretty good in terms of talent. BDC doesn't do workforce development. We work with our partners at MoED, Mayor's Office of Employment Development in terms of training. What we try to do is identify those key growth sectors to make sure that the pipeline of talent is here for those companies.
Yep, yeah, and that's kind of what I was kind of leaning toward, just making sure we're looking at the future and what we may need and making sure we're cultivating the skills necessary to meet the need of the businesses that are coming. So, thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none. Thank you. You are dismissed.
Thank you.
And then next up, we have the Baltimore Office of Promotion and Arts, better known as BOPA, and the Mayor's Office of Arts and Culture.